And this will be coming back, because this was not in the budget. Police Department and the cop scene software and computers that are in the car. Not just software, it's also computers in the car. So we'll be coming back in a future couple of months, few months, to talk more about that. Possibly being able to fund that in the future. It also has a portion that allows the officers to do tickets and then send it straight to the court software. That will be, at some point, a tremendous savings. The utility fund, we've had lots of meetings with the utility fund, but there was a budget amendment. We have some of the items that are going to be repaired. They're minor repairs, but they are not cheap in dollars unfortunately. Some replaced sewer, at the sewer plant bearings and shafts, which is about sixteen thousand dollars. Oh, there's a motor lease we replaced in the motor lift stations that's actually at the sewer plant. There are manholes, pipe things, the lids, we need the rings, they're odd size, so we had some extra money in there for those. Talked about replacing clarifiers, sled rigs. Some of the things that maybe we can add, possibly with the increase in June, you'll have another increase in rates if you pass that. The original water and sewer rate study was a three phase. So we'll be coming back in April, like we did this past year, for that increase and hopefully with that increase possibly do some of the other items such as the oxidation ditch has sludge room will need to have done, clarifiers, there's a beam that needs to be replaced. As well as in the water department, we can get replacing or at least maybe repairing pumps. And then the pump, the roller, the ladder and catwalk needs to be replaced on the basis. That's on those funds. I'm going to kind of stop there. If someone wants to talk, have questions, decisions, or go through any of the things I may have left out, that kind of was a brief. I've gone through it for so many weeks, I don't know.
We're going to be real subject to the citizens' comments. I think we've been very straightforward after each of these workshops about wherever you're going in this budget and with what tax rate we're hoping to achieve. This budget, the next item is reflective of a, next one or two items is the tax rate. The tax rate is the thirty-two, thirty-three for a hundred dollars that we were asked if we were firm on, and that's what's going to be proposed tonight. From my perspective, in working on this budget, this was a collaborative effort of not only the city council, but city staff and a number of city employees taking part in looking at how we can do things and how we can do things without raising taxes. How we can do things and still take the city forward with the number one priority being the requirements of the insolvency plan and that deficit reduction in the reserve allocation. And I think this budget, everybody agreed to when we sat in there and worked on it. And Laura has done yeoman's work in keeping the council informed of how the numbers tweaked here and there and where we can get a little bit of savings here and what we can do. Is it fixing everything? No. Is it doing everything we need to do? No. But it is addressing the immediate priorities and it does recognize with the flat projections for revenues specifically in sales tax and in various other fees across the board, that if we do see an increase in sales tax or an increase in fees, then we can adjust these numbers in two months or three months based upon that. And then we're spending money we actually have. We're not spending money we're hoping to have. And I think that was something that everybody agreed to. Was everybody happy with this budget? No. You know, I know Gloria would, might have had the part-time employee. I know we need to get some more employees out in other places. We were unable to upgrade the warrant officer in his court to full time. But we looked at all of the advantages and said, what can we do right now and what can we do in six months if the revenue supports it? And made some hard decisions with. But I, for one, who spent a tremendous amount of time working on this budget, am very, very pleased with this budget and more pleased with the consensus that everybody came to in developing it. This wasn't a one-man budget or a one-person budget. This was a team development of asking questions. What if we do this, can we save over here? Or what if we do this, can we save over here? I know Monica played in the one role where Laura was not here and our city secretary was not here, was an avid supporter of the employees and asked some good questions and provided some great information into how we can balance this budget and what would work and what wouldn't work. And I think, again, everybody was not a hundred percent happy, but I think it was a consensus vote. But I mean, as far as detail, Laura, we're really subject to the citizens' comments at this point.
I commend the efforts of council and staff as well, and I believe it is a step in the right direction for the city.
We'll be back. Can I have a motion?
As such, I make, the motion, well, I got to read this thing here. Wrong one. Do we need to read the ordinance? This is an issue.
No, we wonder if you don't think they just, it's very hard to review that decision.
Now, I'll pass mine on to another piece of paper. Could you read the motion, Chris, and I'll make, or read the verbiage and then I'll make the motion as you read it? I'm here, Chris. Make a motion to move to revenue.
No, this one's just to approve ordinance twenty thirteen.
Oh, to approve the ordinance. Approve the ordinance twenty thirteen dash zero seven.
For the two thirteen fourteen budget.
Do we need to read the cover or the caption? The caption. Read it in the record. Read the caption. I have that. Ordinance number twenty thirteen dash zero zero seven, and ordinance approving and adopting the budget for the city of Florisville, Texas, for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty thirteen, and ending September thirty, twenty fourteen, and making appropriations for each fund and department. Establishing a sinking fund for our existing city financial obligations, providing for the levying and collection of a sufficient tax to pay the interest on such sinking fund obligations, repealing conflicting ordinance, providing a savings and severability clause, and declaring ineffective. So I make the motion to approve ordinance twenty thirteen dash zero zero seven for the twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen budget.
I have a motion by Councilman Miller. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second your motion.
Can I have a second, by Councilman Miller, if you saw in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries five zero. Great job to everyone.
That ordinance will be included in the budget after this, so now we get final next week. It'll be on the most likely clean, exact.
Orders will list that. Orders will list that.
They're simple. Cleanse cap law, I didn't know that it doesn't, it's okay.
Check all paths.
Every time we look, I look at myself, a little over there, go, and then follow it.
Now, we're going to go on to item two F, consideration in action regarding ordinance is levying taxes for the maintenance and operation of the city of Florisville, providing for the interest in sinking fund for the year twenty thirteen. Laura?
This is the next step in the process. State requires you to adopt your budget first and then adopt your tax rate. When there was discussion on the tax rate, several meetings, this particular budget still held with the proposed one from the city manager, point three two three three. Maintenance and operation, which is your general fund, only gets point five, point one five four seven of that rate, and the I N S, which is that service, is point one six eight six. So there is a little verbiage and a lot of any controversy at hand, like it says.
Are we going to capture it in the ordinance?
And then.
Yes. Perfect. I'm going to go ahead and read the caption of the ordinance. Ordinance number twenty thirteen dash zero zero eight, and ordinance fixing and levying municipal admin order taxes for the fiscal year beginning on October one, twenty thirteen, and ending on September thirty, twenty fourteen. Providing for the tax, excuse me, providing for taxes for the maintenance and operation of municipal government of the city of Florisville, Texas, and providing for the interest in sinking fund for the year twenty thirteen. Being ordained by the council of the city of Florisville, Texas.
I have a motion.
And use the mon.
Got to read that, okay. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of point three two three three, which is effectively a two point four one percent increase in the tax rate, and to approve ordinance number twenty thirteen dash zero zero eight for the twenty thirteen property tax rate broken down by the maintenance and operation of point one five four seven and the interest in sinking of point six eight six per one hundred dollar valuation of property.
There we go. That's your motion.
Okay. Have a good change.
That's it. That's the motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Miller. Can I have a second?
I'll second your motion.
Second by Councilman Miller, if you saw in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries five zero. Moving now on to Laura, you need to stand there for the rest of the evening. Consideration in action to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen budget.
Okay, I got this one.
Yeah.
Move to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the FY twenty thirteen, fourteen annual budget and take a record vote.
I have a motion. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Councilman Miller, second by Councilman Miller, if you saw in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries five zero. On to item two H, consideration in action to approve interlocal agreement with F E D C concerning provision of employment, insurance, and retirement benefits for full-time F E D C employees under the insurance policy currently in effect for the city employees. Jason.
Okay, you know, Andy Eubanks was going to be here tonight, and I just drove straight in from Dallas to get here. But anyway, he had his thank meeting and couldn't make it, but probably next time he's going to be here. But I wanted to say, take a moment on this item to say thank you to Laura and every one of you that helped all of us cooperatively together. The team effort, there is no doubt the F E D C board is a strong board, and we work together as a team. And that's illustrated in how we brought all this together to the point that we're at now. And if it's okay with you, Mayor, may I have Mary Helen Teak can just say a few words about our new hire?
Well, we'd love to have her sit.
Okay.
Well, our personnel meeting was formed in January, and we first had to write a job description to make sure that we had it in mind. Once we got that going, we began looking very seriously after Mr. Davis of Berkeley resigned, to try to find someone. I want to thank Graham Ramirez for being our head of the line. He's an outstanding job for us, and I really do thank him. I think he's in the best. And he will continue to work with our new man for probably four to six weeks or whatever it takes in that timeframe to get him settled in. Mr. Tommy Baker is the gentleman we decided on after a pretty thoughtful process of selecting candidates. We had a total of seventeen who applied, many of whom had our intention, but had nowhere near the qualifications to do this job. Two men that had run up at the top of a ladder so stupid were going to be in person with the four member committee to do the selection. So I think having had the opportunity to visit with them personally and get to know them, probably over an hour's worth of interrogation, I might say, we really did feel strongly that the candidates came out of the top. I think he will be a good fit for this community. He is not a flashy person. He's not going to be somebody who's going to be throwing his weight around. He will learn this city. He has a strong desire to fit in and to do the right thing for the city. He's already got some good ideas that he's thinking about. He and his wife will be moving here. Our stipulation was that this individual must live at least within the Florisville and within its school district. So he is already making plans to do that. He should be on board October one. I would like, hopefully, to have some sort of a reception for him and his wife once they're in here, so we can all welcome him into the position. But he comes with a lot of experience. His references work excellent. And I want to clear up one thing. In the paper, it says that he designed and they gave him a payoff. Well, it wasn't that way exactly. The man resigned to take care of a dying relative. And I think there's nothing more honorable than that, and we need to be careful about judging and taking for granted what we read in any resource and make sure that we do our own vetting before we make outrageous statements, such as are made in the blogs. They're hurtful, they're harmful, and they can really do some damage to people's integrity. So I would caution people to not always take it exactly the way it's written. This man, this man is a good fit for our community. Thank you.
In token, I went and told you that I got three calls from three F E D C directors that I didn't even know who they were, telling me what a good choice was going to be. And that was a good one. Here, Ms. Reagan.
Well, everyone that I called on references said rehiring that anytime they want to. So my fault. I was a little.
Okay, so part of the offer there, it's very common for cities to have an F E D, an E D C person as part of the city employee benefits or even hired by the city, meaning an employee of the city, but the supervision retains, is retained by the board of the E D C. Various cities do that. I know Laura came to a city that that same setup was like that. It's difficult when you have such a small operation like a one-man shop to be able to provide them adequate employee benefits packages. So we honestly did this, doing it a lot of different ways, and the end result was, is our recommendation would be an agreement with the city of Florisville. The F E D C is going to be under a department of the city, and that is, that's how she's going to handle the accounting. But at the same time, Laura wrote to the T M R S, which is your Texas Municipal Retirement System, and they indicated that that employee would be eligible for their retirement plan and based on your agreement, should be on that retirement plan. Okay? So this is in line with what a lot of other cities do. Also want to thank cities of G, because they have been very, very helpful in some of our documents that we've tried to use to send to your attorney to get final approval. And they've been very easy to work with. I don't believe in reinventing the wheel. I think you need to just take some, and if it works with them, then just copy it and move on. But this agreement was written and then reviewed by your attorney here. And if you'd like to add anything, Chris?
Jason's actually done a pretty good job covering it, worked with Laura to give the call and make sure that it's in line with the budget. What it would be essentially is that the F E D C employees, currently there's going to be one full-time employee, but there are more in the future, it's covered in this, would be employees of the F E D C department of the city, and the F E D C would reimburse the city for all expenses associated with that, is what the internal consideration is. For payroll, for taxes, for insurance, for everything that's paid for by the city for that employee or employees. It's more helpful.
And so what's going to happen is you'll provide us an invoice each pay period, and then we pay that invoice. And is that correct? No, we work.
Transfer money. They're going to be in your books, it's just like the utility fund employees. But I personally will get their paycheck just the same time that all other employees are finally entered. Same, it's just one through the payroll module, and it'll actually expense everything straight to their set of books. So it'll be pretty seamless. We'll just have to have their cash transfer.
Our board approved this, this Monday night as well, as stated. Any other questions?
Can you have your signed copy by your board members, so that we can just sign along this?
No, I do not.
I think Mr. Eubanks has acted present.
Right, so we'll have to give Mr. Eubanks the.
Then we'll be signing the same one.
What's that?
How will we can all sign this?
Yep.
Jason, I've read the agreement, and I think it's good that we clearly define that besides the legality of the issue of supervisory control over E D C employees not being on the city side of House of Representatives. But it does clearly define that in this agreement. I don't have any, any partner with that, and Laura is comfortable with the books. I think all of this, putting the E D C books together so that everybody's looking at the same numbers is really helpful compared to some of the budgets that we've seen in the past. And this just further cements that relationship with the E D C. So I'm going to make the motion to approve the interlocal agreement with the F E D C concerning provision of employment, insurance, retirement benefits for full-time F E D C employees under the insurance policy currently in effect proceeding.
I have a motion by Councilman Miller. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Councilman Miller, if you saw in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to go on to item two I, consideration in action to approve the recommendation of the planning and zoning committee concerning the application for a special use permit for the proposed DeCon Springs RV Park to be located at nineteen fifty-six Southern Springs Road, Florisville, Texas, seventy one one four.
First, I'll book on booking.
Well, what you have is there, Mayor, council, is on Monday, P N Z approved the special use permit of the application that was submitted back in March twenty nine, two thousand and twelve. It was, it's pre-mortem. It did go through the planning on June sixth, two thousand and twelve, but it was tabled. So it was, it's picked up from there. The specific use, if you look at the application, is the construction of an RV park, clubhouse, and recreational area, including a grill, playground, basketball court, and a special use. If you look in your packets, you have all the comments from our engineer that who went through it and who did approve the plans that were submitted to, to us on Monday, Monday night. And one more thing. What the P N Z did approve Monday night was they made a motion to approve the special use permit, but with the comments that Mr. Heimer has put on there to make sure that we have a six, a six-foot minimum solid wood fence to the complete, to the perimeter of the property and to take the engineer's recommendation of installation of a six-inch big road base of asphalt, concrete capable for supporting weight of the RV trailers and trucks, and meeting the grade we require.
And all of this is governed by section one fifty-three dot zero six six B of the city's code of ordinance is on here. And what that sets forth, this is a special use permit, is actually a land use designation of a piece of property. It's not the building plan, it's not the permit for the actual construction. It's to essentially rezone a small area to allow for, in this case, an RV park as required by the city ordinance that was in effect at the time. Under that, the council can impose such conditions as it deemed fit on there. The recommendations from P N Z were that six-foot solid wood privacy fence. The comments that Larry Heimer made on this are actually to put it in accordance with city regulations that are in effect. And they're saying it needs to be brought up to these levels. They're a little deficient on what was provided. On here, the city council can make recommendations as to requirements for paving of streets, alley sidewalks, means of ingress and investment of public streets, provisions for drainage, adequate off-street parking, and protective screening, open space. That covers the roads, the fence, as mentioned, and everything, and allows the council to do that. For legal purposes, we've got to point out, that's not a condition precedent, something that's required before granting a special use permit. That's before they can get the certificate of occupancy. So all that would have to be done, not before it actually is rezoned, but before it can actually be put into effect. As everybody knows, there's a moratorium in effect now that would prevent such an application from proceeding in current state, under the current state laws. However, because this was filed back in twenty twelve prior to the implementation of that moratorium, and because the use for the area was set for this or an RV park, there have been some modifications to the plans, but that doesn't substantially change the use for which the location is being, for which they are named. And so that's why it's still under a contested rights, which means the laws and the rules that are in effect at such time are the laws and rules that are in effect when considering the application.
So does the C and I need to be amended, or can it be presented as such?
It could be presented as such. It should, anyway, have their agenda, so I can see what this is.
In other words, does it have to be amended with the recommendations presented?
That the P N Z has fought for?
Yeah, because the C and I are asked to approve the recommendation of the P N Z committee, and so the recommendation was to include the, the buttons on there.
By the engineer.
The engineer and the fence.
And if the P N Z board also included the fence?
Now, the non-standard agreements are entirely different.
Correct. That's to cover, because this is involving P N Z and zoning, this only covers everything that's, I guess, on the west side of the gas line, which marks the city boundary through the middle of.
This is just the rezoning.
Correct. This is for the part that's directly inside of the city.
But other than the rezoning, we're not addressing anything else in this part.
Correct. And you'll have, under the, under the city laws, oh, six months to come in with requests for building permits and everything else to approve the site plans and everything. If the, the use is, the lovely word harmonious with what's already in the area, and if there is the ability to provide the services that are necessary, with Mr. Heimer said, there's adequate water and sewer in the area.
The zoning, we're not addressing that.
Right, it's, it's just considerations that could be taken into account to whether it could be rezoned. But this is for the actual rezoning of the.
Well, given that, Mr. Attorney, I'd like to make a question. To approve the recommendation of the P N Z committee concerning the application for a special use permit for the proposed Con Springs RV Park to be located at nineteen fifty-six Southern Springs Road, Florisville, Texas, seventy one one four.
This second.
I have a motion by Councilman Castillo, second by Councilman Lornes, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Upstate.
Motion carries four zero.
Item J, that is rendered, because this was, this agenda had to be posted before P N Z, so that was involved in it.
So item J's, maybe no one can read. So now we're going on to two K, consideration in action to approve the non-standard services agreement for the proposed DeCon Springs RV Park to be located at nineteen fifty-six Southern Springs Road, Florisville, Texas, seventy one one four, to include the area located within the city of Florisville and provision of services to the portion of the development located in the city of Florisville, Texas, to care of jurisdiction. Cindy?
I'll take a lead on this one, if you'll allow. It's a contract, it's kind of an order for you.
I'll take a lead on this one if you'll, it's a contract, it's kind of an order for you. What this is, is for the area that wasn't covered by the previous item we discussed. This is for the area that's really outside in the actual territorial jurisdiction. The distinction here is that where the rest of this is doesn't fall under the service plan requirements to have been under some of this inside the city or inside of the CCA. This is to cover, I guess it's about eleven point three five acres, and if you have the map, it's the bigger part that's going to have the park on it on there. That's out of the county. Now, the distinction is, it's not subject to any sort of zoning requirements out of the county. There isn't no local that was entered into in two thousand and two with the city of Florisville and the county, and Wilson County, that gave Wilson County's permit officials, the wonderful Ms. Nickle who are here, the authority to handle the permits that are in that area. Now, she has to go by the permitting process and procedures and the requirements that the county has in effect for that area, but she will be the one to actually do the inspection and then look at everything, make sure everything's in compliance. This non-standard service contract then is, because it's not something that falls into mandated service, it's to provide service for the rest of this, a contractual obligation that Mr. Starnes and his company would be entering into. And some of the parts of this are, he'll be responsible for construction of the necessary sewer and water improvements to get out there. And I believe with Mr. Heimer, his set toward the those would all be coming down, so it'll bring the road, and saying that there is adequate capability there, but there will have to be a lift station installed and some other things that this would put Mr. Starnes as responsible for providing payments for. It's got, for the city's benefit, reimbursement of city funds that have been expended on engineering and legal services. They all already paid out to our firm and Mr. Heimer, and anything that's directly associated to the provision of water and sewer services out there under those would also be reimbursable to the city from Mr. Starnes under this contract. It essentially binds him to having city officials out there to inspect whatever water and sewer lines he installs, in case the area is annexed. That way it can guarantee that it's up to city standards, that it's up to necessary future development requirements out of the area. It's, it would be a binding contract. While the city doesn't have any statutory authority under the PNC because it's outside the ETJ, it would give contractual authority to essentially enforce the requirements that are inside this country.
By city code, at work for lift stations, after naming, is it code for the city to basically adopt or inherit a lift station after a certain amount of time?
From what I understand, that the station's going to be private?
The, the lift station, we're in private, the, the lines installed and everything, however, I believe are dedicated to the city under the terms of this contract. And so keeping it as a private lift station would therefore require Mr. Starnes to pay the maintenance fees and anything else that's going with that.
Chris, here's the issue I have with this. We talked about this, and you alluded to it, and, and I've been involved in this thing from, you know, when, when I was the, the go-between on the city side to, to serve as the person to, to talk to or approve that letter to go back to Starnes on this thing. And we really said, hey, let's go back to the original plan, okay? That was, went to PNC. And today, I'm reading about cabins, okay? And, and granted, this is in the county, it is in the ETJ, but Starnes has also talked about voluntary annexation. And my question is, are we approving this plan by approving this non-standard agreement?
What the city would be approving under this non-standard agreement is the water and sewer service to that plant. Now, the actual construction of the cabins and everything else, the city cannot approve, because the city has no jurisdiction.
We have the permit.
You have the permit according to the county standards.
But, but the entire purpose of this whole dance, and, and the entire purpose of the ETJ is so that we have construction that occurs in the ETJ that when it is annexed, be it voluntary or through the normal process, that it already meets city standards. You cannot talk to me in one breath and say, I'm talking about voluntary annexation, but here are plans to build something that isn't going to meet city's facts. I have a problem with that.
And unfortunately, my only legal response to that can be that since he's not in the city, he can talk about being voluntarily annexed, it is, you know, until the cows come home, but then until that annexation ordinance passes and until it's formally annexed, because the rules of the county will apply to that area.
And, and again, I'm going to say this, and this isn't directed at you, but if all of this conversation that has occurred between your office and planning and zoning has been Mr. Starnes, go back to your original plan, we, we can work it, we can make it work, we've done the engineers. This is not the original plan. The original plan was mobile homes and RVs. Now we're talking about cabins.
It was only RVs, no mobile homes.
Okay, only RVs. Now we're talking cabins. This is a change. And, and I'm very uncomfortable with these last-minute changes that keep coming up in, in this project. And the non-standard agreement and providing the utilities and the stuff that is outside the CCA makes perfect sense. We came up with a great agreement with this. But Mr. Starnes again, or through his attorney or through his staff, here at the eleven tower is giving us another change or another condition that we have to approve, or something else that, that's going to develop in this thing. And I'm damn uncomfortable with that.
Christmas is approved. Mr., do you recommend this?
For the, the legal part, the non-standard, yes, because that protects the city employees and the first.
And that's what the CNA is for, right? The non-
For the non-
The non-standard service. Well, Tommy said that I would like to approve the non-standard service agreement for the proposed Conne Springs RB Park to be located at nineteen fifty-six Southern Springs Road, Florisville, Texas seventy-one-one-four, to include the area located within the city of Florisville and provision of services to the portion of the proposed development located in the city of Florisville's extra territorial jurisdiction.
One second.
I have a motion by Councilman Castillo, second by Councilman DeRado, all in favor? I'm sorry, what am I, sorry? All in favor?
All right. Upstayed.
All opposed? Motion carries. Four zero.
Freezer.
Stay, stay. Okay, now on to item two I, consideration in action to approve a conflict of interest waiver for the city attorney and to authorize the city manager and city attorney to negotiate with the Volunteer Fire Department representatives to draft a service provider agreement for presentation to the city council for review.
On this one, what this is, as some of you know, and some of you may not know, the city of Florisville currently has a written contract that we've been able to locate with the Florisville Volunteer Fire Department, which is a separate entity. Right now, currently the Volunteer Fire Department at least submits reimbursables to the city upon calls and is paid out on per reimbursed basis. Going back to, kind of tied into what happened at two council meetings ago with the FEDC verbal agreements and trying to get everything right, and this is an attempt to formalize, or what will be an attempt to formalize the agreement right. The reason why we have this conflict of interest policy up here today is we're the attorney for the FEDC, and obviously we're also the, the city attorney. And so what had been discussed previously with Mr. Josman, a city manager, was a splitting of the fees between the two entities to get this contract going and finalized. There's not really anything too contentious. Laura, is there already a line item for provision of payment to the volunteer fire department in the budget?
Yes, there, there is, and there always has been that way. But there, this agreement needs to be done for purposes. They're going to need to obtain their own corporate cop insurance. They're currently covered under ours, but they are not exclusively the city's. They also contract with this county, and their equipment is currently under our insurance, and that means they're going to have to seek their own insurance on that as well.
And, and I can tell you, as their attorney, and this isn't speaking out of school, it's pre-public, they are working with BFIS, which does insurance for fire equipment to move those items off the contract under there. And so what this is, is essentially anything, even though it's a fairly agreed, agreed, well, everyone wants to reduce it to writing, the money's already budgeted, and how difficult would it be arguing over funds and when we're drafting this contract, there is still potentially, as with any legal issue, there could be where the two sides are going to be on something that's major and leads to, hopefully not in this case, I'll see it, but potentially worst-case scenario litigation of some sort. And for that reason, we have to make it clear that we are currently attorney for both parties, and that if something like that happens, we would have to withdraw on this matter from representation of both parties. And the outside counsel would have to be brought in to finish the contract or do something to enforce the contract.
Having said that, I feel they should get their own attorney, since y'all have been our attorney all this time. For the same reason that we come to, well, we have to sue each other or whatever, and then y'all are going to come out and go secondly, that's our attorney?
Well, no, that would be.
Because you said y'all vote, you said, so it's like the vote.
Yes, that's correct, for the drafting of the contract, yes. That's what we're happy to do. And that's just, that's ethics and.
And that, that's my concern, is section four of the, of the agreement, it says that, you know, if there's a conflict, the attorneys would have to, the attorney would have to withdraw and from both issues. That puts it back at, at the start of the contract again. Where, the way I see it, it would be better if the fire department had their own attorney, city had their attorney, and that way we wouldn't have a problem in the middle of it, if there was a, a serious problem. At that time.
Now, are, are we talking about a waiver for just this contract issue, or for any issue with the fire department?
Just for the drafting of this contract. That's all we've been retained by. The, the fire department, the, the story on this, the background here, is we're retained by them to help them first become a nonprofit corporation under the state effects, and then to get their IRS five oh one C three. As a part of that, to get their books in order and everything else, as y'all experienced with some of the entities around here, we wanted to get everything in writing for agreements that they have. And so our fee agreement with them includes, you know, getting them in order with their stat- corporate status, their, their I O S status, and then formalizing any underwritten contracts that they have. So the waiver for this would be simply for the drafting of this agreement.
So it's not any issue, it's just this one issue?
Correct. If the fire department, something happened and they came in and sued the city, you know, six months down the road, there's something happening, a vehicle crash or something with, you know, a fire truck and city vehicle, we would not be their lawyers, we would be representatives of the city.
Does that address your concerns, Mr. Winters?
Well, like I said, my only concern is during this contract, if there's a, if a problem that can't be settled, then the, the agreement says that the attorney will withdraw from both sides, then we would have to both get new attorneys anyway and start from scratch or be on the, on the contract. It would take our, our time and our money and everything else.
So your recommendation is not to approve the, the waiver?
Yes.
Chris, what, what impact would that have, not approving this waiver? Would, would the fire department end up being able to still, through a, a different attorney, be able to come back to the city and help get this, this agreement?
Yes, like a, it would just double fees for everyone involved. So splitting the fees down the middle between the two, everybody would be paying either our own attorney and when attorneys get together, and sometimes.
So the best recommendations to done, denied, based on?
Just on the possibility that, that there may be a problem.
And our, our recommendation, obviously, while we're bringing this, is because we don't see that there would be a problem similar to working with Mr. Talley, the FEDC, in a local agreement, and him sending it to us to review and getting it back and bringing it before council. It's something where there, there doesn't appear to be much conflict between the two sides. They already perform all these services, they already have a budgeted amount that's in there for the services. It's just reducing all of those agreements to writing on paper.
So legally, it's recommended it, and our city manager is not. So you're saying approve, and our city manager says deny?
Yeah. I, I have some reservations because of some other issues. This is, this is one of the type of agreements that was way back when, in November, we talked about, we needed the E N D, the EMS as well. But we have some issues that, you know, a call run, what are they going to provide for us? And it could get a difficult, you know, conversations going back and forth. We also have the issue, we have some equipment that's on our books. And I, I just, I'm concerned that this could as well, and then if we've got our attorney, they're going to have to say we can't get out.
And, and that certainly has a sample of that.
They need to have their own attorney. Anyway, I think this would be a good start for them.
I agree. Based on the city manager's recommendation and the city staff's recommendation, moving now to approve.
I have a motion, Councilman Miller. May I have a second?
A second.
Second by Councilman Castillo. All in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Motion carries. Five zero.
Hey, no problem. So we're, I mean, it's a, it is a conflict, that's why we have to get a waiver. If there was a conflict.
I believe you're up to the last.
Okay, our last item. Item two M, consideration in action to approve expenses on major mechanical repairs, unnecessary machinery. Mr. Winters and Mr. Clark?
Basically, what we're talking about there is the front-end loader, which the city uses every day, both departments, I mean, both, the general fund, the utilities, they use it for streets, they use it for the sewers. It broke, we need to get it back in line, back online, I mean. Also, it's used extensively doing the Piment Festival by the city crews to move big sculptures around, get pieces of fixtures and stuff for the festival. We need to do, we need to get that fixed for, in a timely manner. So at one of the budget meetings, we talked about repairing stuff that was emergency use. This comes, in my opinion, this comes under that. Also, it was the sludge truck broke down just a few days later, and we have it under repair now. I think total bill for it, the estimate for it is about thirteen hundred dollars, that's parts and labor. The estimate for the front-end loader is, I believe it's fifteen thousand one hundred dollars. I know it says for consideration in action for y'all, and I hope you approve it, because I approved it the other day, to where it didn't hit till things done. Because like I said, we're in a time crunch with the backup, with the front-end loader. And also, to buck the sludge truck, every day it's out of service or every few days, because we have to pay someone to haul the sludge out to the, to the disposal area. So we're losing, in five loads, we'll pay for the repairs on the sludge truck. And the man's already working on it today, so it should be fixed by, probably by morning from there. So we won't be losing that money that we have to pay somebody else. Did we have to borrow the counties? Not that, no. But, but we can if we have to.
But I think.
They may have been into today, I don't know. I asked them the other day, and they said that they could borrow it if they needed to, but, but it's, once I know they have borrowed it yet.
These funds were, where are they coming from? This fifteen thousand?
Oh, part of it's coming out of the, well, I'll let Laura answer that one.
Again, when we, a few meetings ago, when we talked about some of the vacancies, this is a general fund, so the vacancies that we haven't filled.
So these are the excess dollars that we identified for some emergency projects already that didn't get actually done, they got pushed into next year because of.
No, this is in the general fund, so this is just strictly from the park vacancies, discrete vacancy, and two people in those dollars.
And we're not taking any, we're not sacrificing any deficit reduction in this fiscal year? We're not sacrificing anything by?
We shouldn't, as long as we're waiting on the sixty thousand from FEDC, because we have to pay for that, the general fund, it could be tight. Because we also have some other items we talked about, the police department over to. some other items we talked about, the police department over to us. It was on the general fund.
And, you know, obviously, that, this front-end loader is-
It's a large piece of-
Yeah, it is integral to, to the operations of the city to ensure health and safety, correct?
Yeah, we took it at the dump, it was a dump day, and then and again, this, a brand-new one is about a hundred thirty-five thousand. We looked up some used ones. It's a nineteen, this one's a nineteen ninety-seven Volvo L seventy. They're going anywhere, used from thirty-five to sixty. So it, it's not, it's not a cheap fix, but it needs to be repaired.
That rear end, is it repaired, is it being repaired or replaced?
It's being repaired.
Yes, and did you, did you, uh, look at the options of being replaced as the repair is being repaired?
Uh-
And the prices?
I really don't know. What, what do you, what do you do? The guys, yeah, the front-end loader, the, uh, I believe my kid just got the dent, and I, I think it was just to replace it. It's the same firm that works on it every time, or over the years.
I think they're replacing the whole rear end, I believe, you know, John does.
Yeah, they're replacing, they're replacing the whole thing.
Yeah.
Because if you, if you would go, being for years working with equipment like that, if you just replace it with the used you're not going to guarantee it's going to have the whole, you know, the whole work out of it.
If, if you're, if you're repaired?
Yeah.
And, and that was my question, is, is if, uh, I mean, the, the pricing, is it a price for being repaired or replaced? Because, you know, obviously, you're going to get more use out of a, a replaced rear end rather than a, than a repaired one.
We can replace with all new parts, I'm sorry. It's not, they're not going to double down on the old used, uh, front-end loader, they're repairing it.
In view of the fact that this is already a deal, we should approve it anyway, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the expenses on major mechanical repairs on necessary machinery. I have a motion by Councilman Castillo, second by Councilman Lornis, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries for seven.